Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order, a work session to order at 5:32. Roll call?
Mary Hernandez present. Esquiochua present.
Nereida Cantú present.
Alden Avírez present. Dr. Sainz, I do declare a call.
Thank you. Can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comments?
We have no public comments.
Since there are no public comments, we'll move on to number five, budget work session. Number seven, first on the list is 2021-2022 student-staff ratios.
Good afternoon, Madam President, members of the board and members of the community present. Today, we'll be discussing a budget work session, number seven. First of all, we'd like to direct you to page three. On page three, this is something that we briefly discussed last work session. And this is a summary, a history of our, the district's student-to-teacher ratio. And this is based on the data that we submit through our PIMS to TEA. So it's based on the PIMS snapshot date. I would like to direct you to the school year 2012-2013. Back in that school year, our student-to-staff ratio was 7.20. Comparing that to what we currently have for the 21-22, we're at 5.94. This number previously was an area that was evaluated through the first report. And the recommendation was that the lowest number there would be seven, seven to one. So as you can see, we are below the seven. And that's something that, as a district, we need to focus on and keep an eye on that. Okay? The next one, next column is the student-to-teacher ratio. Once again, in 2012-2013, we had, we were at 14.78. And for the 21-22 school year, we're at 13.14. Once again, this was something that was also evaluated through the first report. And the recommendation was that we needed to be at least at 14. So we're below that 14. So again, this is something else that we need to look at.
Mr. Trevino, could you tell us? Mr. Trevino? Hold on. Mr. Trevino, could you tell us how you arrive at those numbers? The student-staff ratio?
I'm sorry?
Could you tell us how you arrive at the number, student-to-staff ratio?
Okay. When it comes to student-to-staff ratio, we take, the way it's done, it takes the total employees that we report on Snapshot divided by the student. Or vice versa, the student divided by the total number of employees that we have. And that's how we arrive at it.
I just wanted it for the sake of the community.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
And then how about the teacher-student teacher ratio?
The teacher, same concept there. But this is only those employees that are reported that are in a teaching position. So we take the total student population divided by the number of teachers that we submitted. And that's how we get the student-teacher ratio. Okay?
Thank you.
Once again, right below it, there's a graph that shows a history. I mean, the enrollment is the ones in blue. Teachers is the one in orange. And the non-teacher is the one in red. As we see back in the, in 2016-17 school year, that's where our enrollment started going down. And that particular year, our non-teachers, FTEs, increased. And our teachers went down also. But one of the things that we're seeing is even, even though the staff is going down, it's not going down at the same rate as our student population has been decreasing. So that's something also that we need to keep note of. Any other questions on this slide? If not, we can move on to page five. And this is our projected enrollment and average daily attendance for the district. This is something that we've presented previously. We just wanted to show it since it's possibly our last work session. We want to show that for the 22-23 school year, we are projecting an enrollment of 23,425 and an average daily attendance of 21,500. As you can see, back in, for 21-22 school year, we had an enrollment of 24,605. And our actual ADA was 19,531. Of course, this is the ADA before adjustments. It's what we actually reflected. And just to remind you that the projected enrollment that we had for this year was at 25,592. And the actual ADA that we had budgeted on was at 23,033. So any, any questions on this, sorry, this page?
And we got for ADA, the 21,5.
21,5 is what we are projecting for next year. And we took into account, so you know, the decrease that we've had for the last couple of years and also incorporating the effect that ADA would have in our, to our student population on that one, to arrive at this, at this number. And we took an average of our attendance that we've had in the last few years, with the exception of the last 19, 20, and 21, because those were really not true years. The ADA was adjusted accordingly. And that's when COVID hit us. So we were virtual, so. Okay. If we turn on to page seven, here we'll be talking about property values. We had shared this with you about two work sessions before. And we continue to monitor the property values as appraised by, as published by the Idalul County Appraisal District. These values for the 22-20, for tax year 2022, fiscal year 22-23, are as of the May 23 update by Idalul County. At that point, we, our property values are at $3,391,939,000. There, that is a 7.08% increase from the previous year. If you notice there, the previous year, we had a 14.35% increase from the previous year, from the 20, the 21. So the values are being evaluated by Idalul County. This value will continue to change. We will not have the final number until July the 25th. That's when the Idalul County would be submitting, publishing their certified values.
July 25th?
I'm sorry, what?
July, you said July? Did I hear correctly? July 25th?
July 25th. Yeah. It's the last week in July when they, when they publish it. Let me see. Yeah. July 25th is by, I believe that's their, by law, that they have to publish, certify them. Any other questions on this? Next, we'll be talking about revenue and expenditure projections. I would like to guide you over to page nine. Here are some current revenue assumptions based on, we're basing this, of course, on preliminary property values that had a 7.8% increase as discussed in the previous slide. Also, we are projecting a 21,500 in total average daily attendance for the 22-23 school year. One of the things, we are applying a total of 17 Tier 2 pennies, which include disaster pennies due to the winter storm Yuri that happened back in February 13 through the 17 of 2021. We have been in communication with legal counsel so that they can provide us the necessary documentation so that when we're ready to adopt the tax rate, that is the resolution that we will be adopting. Here, one of the things that I do want to mention is that since this, this year, I mean, for 22-23, we are using, taking advantage of the disaster pennies, which equals to about 3.17 cents in disaster pennies. For next year, if there's no disaster during this fiscal year, this calendar year, I'm sorry, next year, we would have to be thinking about going out for a TRE, test, a rollback election, in order for us to be, take advantage of those three pennies, 3.17 pennies. If we would not have had a disaster last year, those 3.17 pennies, we would have, would be $4.5 million less in state aid.
How much?
$4.5 million, approximately, of course. So that's something that we, as a district, we would need to start thinking about. And this would be something maybe in November, December, so that way we can have our election. I believe it would have to be in March election for the TRE. Any, any other questions on this slide? If not, we can move on to page 10. This is a general revenue funds. And here, we're only talking about general revenue. We have, and they're broken down between local taxes, other local revenues, state and federal funds, and then our total. We have what we approved for the 21-2 school year. And at the average daily attendance of 23,033, we were anticipating a total revenues of That compared to this proposed budget for 22-23, we are, our average daily attendance is 21,500 for a total revenues of 286,291,000. That's a decrease of about $11.6 million compared to the budget last year. The preliminary actuals there is based on the adjusted average daily attendance that the governor, that the state provided to districts because of a low enrollment, low attendance statewide. And of course, this one, we have not incorporated the SADA numbers, which would help us. But that money, that those funds, we anticipate about $279 million. That's still a decrease of about $18 million compared to what our budget planned. Of course, we're waiting until we actually, we don't have the numbers for the six, six weeks, so that way we can have preliminary calculations for the current year. Okay? Any, any other questions? If not, also on page 11, this is a listing of special projects. This had been previously presented to you. As a cabinet, we went because our goal was to balance out our general fund. And after reviewing the budget, we made some reductions here. One of the things that we excluded was the purchase of 10 bus, school buses and the, the National Hispanic Institute travel allowance. And that one would have to be through the current budget that we have, not additional funds for that. And $120,000 for the Nellie Shunier Upgrade here, Foundation. So right now, our budget includes $5.7 million in special projects. And they're listed here. We have snacks for our students, attendance incentives, and down the line. I mean, one of the things that we, as a district, we did not want to reduce or eliminate any activities that relate to students. So therefore, all the fine arts requests to upgrade their equipment and uniforms, things like that, had, were granted and they're included in our budget already. Any questions?
With all this, did I hear correctly that then we don't have to go into the fund balance? Or we're still going to have to go into the fund balance?
No, ma'am. And we'll be discussing those numbers on the next sheet as to how we're funding all the activities here. On slide number 12, this is a recap by funding source. And, and I'd like to guide you to the first subtotal for the general fund. Or if we look at general fund 199, under 199, we have $214 million in anticipated revenues. And appropriations, we have $196 million in appropriations. That includes the special projects that we talked about. Of course, from that excess revenue that is there, we still have to fund, for example, athletics with 3.7, state special ed of 11.7 million, and our early education allotment of 2.1. I'm happy to say that we balanced out the general fund as a whole. But I would like to remind you that right below it, where it says subtotal for the ESR funds, there's $26,970,000. That is, those, that budget there represents salaries that were moved from the general fund to the ESR grant. Okay? So that would be there for 22-23 and 23-24. So at the end of 20, when we work on the budget for 24-25, those salaries would have to come back to the general fund. Of course, in the next couple of slides, there are some cost-cutting measures that we are looking at. And then we'll, we'll review in the next couple of slides.
So you're saying that in the next two years, we have to cut approximately $26 million?
Correct, ma'am. And that's if, and that's if our student enrollment continues to go down. Okay? Hopefully, there's a turnaround on that and we, our enrollment goes up, then of course, that would help us. But everything, it's, it would depend on the different situations and variables out there.
Which is one of the very important reasons that we need to consider to evaluate our staffing and not replace every person, especially central office administration. And so because staffing is the biggest expense that you'll see further, we need to continue to evaluate our staffing.
Thank you. One of the things that I do want to point out, I mean, every fund, we, especially the federal funds, they have to work within their budgets. I mean, we work with a different directors and they adjust it accordingly. One of the things that I want to point out to you towards the bottom, where we see 753 for our health insurance fund, we're anticipating revenues of $34 million. And our expenditures are at $36 million. That's a deficit of one point, estimated deficit of 1.8 million dollars. I know that there's an agenda item based for approval on the next board meeting. We were asked to survey our employees and a decision would have to be made based on the results from the survey. And that is an agenda item that would be going on Wednesday. Depending on, on Wednesday, we would adjust accordingly to reflect this.
When we got the ESR funds, did you reclassify any ESR monies into our insurance fund?
No, ma'am. I believe that was not one of the items that was in the, what's it called?
That was not in our application.
In the application.
Oh, because I understand, I was speaking to a superintendent and they did that. And they did all the people that got sick and the money that they spent with COVID, all those employees that were sick with COVID, they took all that and they were able to get reimbursed from ESR funds for their insurance fund.
That's something that we definitely will look at. I mean, I know that there's an amendment possibly going for TEA on the ESR. And that's something that we'll look at. Yeah. And, and if it's something, I mean, if it's allowable, we'll go ahead and possibly adjust our grant application and reclassify some of those for the current year. Any, any questions on this slide? If we move on to the next page, on page 13, it's basically the same numbers. But here, they're being grouped by the general fund, special revenue funds, which are federal and our debt service, and then grand total. One of the things that I want to point your attention to is the amount that we are spending, not just in the general fund, but also in our special revenues, that how much we're spending in instruction. I mean, that is why the purpose we're here, to service our students and instructing our kids. So the majority of our budget is in instruction. So out of the $285 million budgeted in general fund, we have $156 million budgeted into instruction. Any questions on this page? Okay. We move on to the next page. It's a breakdown of the general fund. It's on page 14. It's a breakdown of our general fund. And it's, this one is broken down by payroll costs, by, I'm not by payroll costs, by the, the type of activities, whether it be payroll, contracted services, supplies and materials, other operating costs. Same numbers that we talked about previously, but this only represents general fund. Out of the $285 million in the general fund, $224 million are attributed to payroll costs, which includes salaries, benefits, extra duty pay, stipends, and things like that. Okay? Any, any questions on this page? If not, on page 15, this is a pie graph of the general fund, of all expenditures. If you see the pie graph, I mean, the majority of it is shaded in red, which represents payroll costs. And that is about 78.6%, the 224 million. As that keeps growing, the, the other categories are being reduced. Of course, our supplies, our contracted services, other operating costs, I mean, nothing has to give and, and those would be adjusted accordingly. But what, the point here, we wanted to address is that 78.6% of the total budget in the general fund is for payroll costs. Any, any questions on, on this page? Okay. If not, if we move on to page 16, these are additional budget plan notes, just so that we're informed as to what is going to happen next. We will be publishing a required notice in the monitor on June 10th and the 11th, which includes a budget and tax information. And that is going to be include the current information that we're basically presenting tonight. Our maximum compressed rate is still not finalized. So that being done, we, of course, we will be adopting the budget before June 30th. But we will not get the certified property values until July 25th. At that time, that will be submitted to TEA so that TEA can give us our maximum compressed rate. And that would actually determine our actual tax rate for, for MNO. At that point, we will be publishing another required notice for the new fiscal year. This will normally happen in August, right after we get the certified values. And then at that point, at that time, we'll be setting a date time and place for public hearing to discuss the tax rate and adopt the tax rate at that board meeting, the following board meeting. Okay? On page 17, that, that is a sample of the notice that will be published. The numbers represented here are not the actual numbers. This was just a sample for publication purposes on this one. So we'll be sending numbers tomorrow to the, to the monitor so they can be, and prepare this form for us. On page 19, and Ms. Ayala will be discussing this.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Sainz and our community. Some of the proposed cost-saving measures that we have in place includes looking at staffing. The cost savings of positions that we closed this school year is a total of $4,694,708. This includes positions that we closed, totaling to a little over $2 million. And the consolidation of Quica de la Garza Elementary allowed us to save $2.6 million, giving us a total of $4.6 million for this school year. In addition, no additional positions will be added in central office. And positions vacated due to retirement or resignation will be closely evaluated to fill only the most critical. We want to make sure that all of our campuses are appropriately staffed. And again, when we look at central office staff, it will only be to fill the most critical positions. We are going to be doing this because we want to make sure that we offset the costs that we have currently in staffing for ESR. The potential cost savings that we have recommended to close for the 22-23 school year is a total of $1.9 million. And the staffing allocations is going up for board approval at Wednesday's board meeting. And then potential cost savings of continued school consolidations and closures of other positions for the 23-24 school year is $4,873,907. Are there any questions on slide 19? Thank you.
If we move on to page 20, this is proposed cost-saving measures. For the 22-23 department budgets, while preparing the budget for 22-23, the department budgets were evaluated and adjusted accordingly. Of course, like I mentioned earlier, we did not touch those departments that are directly in instruction as far as, like, say athletics, fine arts, and the campuses. Those budgets were not touched. They kept their same allotment. Another measure is for us to sell some district-owned properties. As an example here, if we were to sell the golf course, the district will be saving the operating laws that is approximately about $200,000 a year. That would be a savings to the district. We will continue to evaluate the professional and contracted services throughout the year. And those services that we feel that is something that we can do without, we would not proceed with them. We will continue to evaluate the district's insurance program, including employee contributions. Based on, on the employee survey, the majority of them voted to close the clinic. And that approximately, closing the clinic, there's approximately $1.4 million reduction in expenditures. One of the things that I want to caution you here is by us closing the clinic, our claims will increase due to the continued doctor visits that people would be going to. While, we're also looking at merging bus routes for fuel and fleet cost savings. That was an approximation of about $168,000. So the total potential cost savings is about $7,173,000. That is if we accomplish all the things that we're saying for this coming school year, which is made up of the $1.9 million of the staffing allocations adjustments, 4.8 of additional two closures, the closure of two additional schools, the $200,000 in the golf course, and the 168 on the bus routes. Any, any questions on this?
I, I just want to clarify that on the evaluating professional and contracted services, we will see not just what we can do without, but also evaluate tasks that could be performed in-house by our own staff instead of contracting out.
Going back to the health clinic costs, and I noticed this too in the binder, I was reviewing it yesterday. Quote, does say claims will increase due to continued doctor visits. It is mentioned in the binder and it is mentioned here. And I know it's being recommended by administration. Do you foresee that even if we could close our clinic, and we'll save 1.4 million, but at the same token, you're saying that claims will increase? Do you foresee, I mean, you can't see the future, right? But do you think that we may be shooting ourselves by closing the clinic and then we'll be having extra expenditures more than 1.4?
One of the things that, having conversations with Blue Cross Blue Shield, I mean, we're kind of at the end of the COVID pandemic, of course. We don't know. And their projection was that we should see a reduction in the amount of claims that might be going. How much? We don't know. So that is something that we're hoping for. I mean, but we will not know until we actually start seeing those claims.
And most, most that visited the clinic, I mean, they're not 100% or 90% COVID-related.
Correct.
I mean, there's other issues.
I mean, that's something that we would have to evaluate once we close it and see how much our claims are, are increasing or how, what's the actual change on the claims? This is what we have, unless you have any other questions or suggestions, recommendations?
I don't have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Cantú.
It's just, I mean, it's concerning $27 million that we're having to carry over for the next couple of years. I just think at some point, we need to get a little bit more aggressive to cut down on this deficit because, you know, it's only for the next couple of years that we're able to depend on the ESR funds. So eventually, we're going to have to probably get more aggressive with cost-saving measures.
This does call for that. And what I was going to point, thank you, Mr. Cantú. What I was going to point out is that on page, and I don't know, but the numbers were very, very light. Number three? Page three?
Three.
Three. The, the student-staff ratio, if the first report is looking for us to be at least at seven.
Correct.
Us adding more positions, it doesn't matter where, just adult positions, will continue to reduce this number. And we're already at 5.64. And our first report tells us that we should be at least at seven. So adding any kind of positions will continue to bring this number down. And we could risk the good, what's the top rating, exceptional or whatever, the top rating?
And, and Dr. V, just, that is something that we were evaluating. And, and, and Dr. V, just, uh, that is something that we were evaluated on before. It's not a value, it's not one of the evaluators right now, but that was a recommendation for good financial management, that our ratios remain at, uh, for when it comes to student to total staff, that remains above seven. Okay? Right now, they, they're not, that is not part of the evaluation, but that is something that, that we should, uh, consider, because it was something that TEA had a recommendation previously, so.
Well, I know that TEA looks at that, uh, and if we're already at 5.4, a 5.94, right?
5.94.
Yeah. So.
That is something that is.
Just gonna bring it, it's just gonna bring it lower by adding more people.
Yes. Any other questions?
The other one, I, I, uh, definitely, it says 14, we're almost, uh, there, but I know that's more with the teachers and the students. So at least we're close. But what they're trying to tell us is that we have too many adults to the number of kids that we have. That's the bottom line.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. Does anyone have any other questions?
I do agree with Mr. Cantu that we must be more aggressive. We cannot add a rate of 4 million by closing positions as people leave. Let me see, I don't want to say the wrong number.
Hoyan, in your conversations for meetings for Dr. Signs, have there been other conversations that have been on the table as to what else we can do to save money?
The other conversation that we have had that would be in aggressive mode, uh, mode would be a program change or staff reduction. We have had that conversation also, uh, among the cabinet, as well as among the board, that we do, that would be, uh, something that we could consider is a reduction in force or program change in certain departments, which is a conversation that we have had.
Of course, I know we mentioned, uh, the closure of possible two schools, but that's something that we need to continue to evaluate and see where the enrollment stands, and possibly not just two, maybe possibly another one. I mean, it just depends, I mean, that's something that needs to be looked at and evaluated accordingly.
And that one is on our cost savings measures, and we will be evaluating enrollment, uh, now and in the coming year, and we will consider to make those recommendations to you all.
What I was gonna say, but I wanted to say the exact number, is that at a rate of 4.694,708, uh, per year, it's not gonna get us $28 million. And, uh, this is because this year was a heavy year. A lot of people retired, at least 110. That's not to say that that's what we're gonna have in the following two years to be able to make up that $26 million or. So I'm very concerned about that. I just don't know how we're gonna make it up.
We will continue to bring recommendations, including the two that we have discussed.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Ayala, can you give us an update on how many, where are we with the vacancies? I know we have quite a few teachers being recommended. If everybody gets hired, where will we stand after tomor-, after Wednesday night?
I don't have those, uh, numbers available for you right now, Dr. Benavides, but I can prepare that information and share it with Dr. Sign, so she can have it for you at Wednesday's board meeting.
Okay. I just want to know where we are, because June's gonna go fast, and we need to, to be, uh, I know we won't be 100% staffed, but we need to be, uh, aggressive in the staffing, especially for the teachers, so that no classroom is without a teacher.
And I do want to say, uh, thank you to the board for allowing us to extend contracts to teachers prior to them coming to the board for board approval. That is something that has never been, uh, done before, so we appreciate the support that you give us on that. So thank you very much.
Definitely, we need to get them fast, otherwise another district will get them. Thank you, Mr. Termino, and thank you, Mrs. Ayala. There's no further questions? Then I think we're ready to, uh, adjourn this work session at 6:06. And for the record, Mr. Cantu joins us at 5:34.